I'd like to welcome everyone out to our city council meeting for February 4th, 2020. The time to start is 7:00 PM. Kim, you're ready to roll? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, as customary with Leighton City, we like to take turns conducting the first part of our meeting. And so we, each month, we have each council member kind of take that month to conduct. So for the month of February, Councilmember Day will be leading us in the pledge and the prayer. So Councilman Day.
I've asked Zach Bloxum to lead us in the prayer, following which I will offer the invocation.
Okay.
Uh, the prayer, I'll turn it. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful to be here tonight. We're thankful to be able to meet under such peaceful conditions that we have in this city and in this nation. And we're thankful for those who provide for that through their military service and the police and the other first responders. We're thankful for them and we ask you to watch over them always. Please bless us here tonight that we might have Thy comforting Spirit to be with us, so we might have peace and calm and we may be able to discuss those things that we need to in the appropriate way. Please watch over our city and its residents always, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Council, we have two sets of minutes that we need to act upon, so I would entertain a motion or any type regarding our November 19th, 2020 work meeting and the council meeting from January 7th. That was 20. Make sure you say that right.
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Leighton City work, Leighton City Council work meeting on November 19th, 2020, and the minutes of the Leighton City Council meeting on January 7th, 2021, as written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to any municipal announcements. So Council, do you have any announcements that you'd like to bring before the body? Okay, being that there's none, I do want to make one quick comment regarding the Davis County COVID vaccination clinic. It was stated earlier in our work meeting, and I would like everyone to know that right now, it's the 70-plus age category that it's open to as far as being vaccinated, should you so choose. And for Davis County, they've done an excellent job on the way that they've set up that facility. It's very quick, very smooth, they've got a lot of friendly people working it. However, we, there is additional openings now for the month of February. So if you could, please be a good neighbor, reach out to those that are in that particular category, maybe help them get online to register or take them down there as well as, or, you know, help them with the phone call to get them registered and get them vaccinated if that, like I said, should they choose. So anyway, I just want to make that known for all of our residents here in Leighton. At this time, we'd like to move on to our verbal petition and presentation, which we do have a proclamation that I would like to read regarding our healthcare professionals. Whereas the year 2020 ushered in significant and unwelcome changes to our lives, instead of celebrating our centennial and increasing our knowledge of the city's history, we increased our vocabulary, the novel coronavirus, increased social distancing, six feet, increased our hand washing, and increased our facial fashions. Whereas, the serious impact of this pandemic was felt by all, particularly those who lost loved ones and had to do it at a painful distance. Yet at least one constant remains, the diligence and presence of our healthcare professionals. And whereas, our family, friends, and neighbors who selected healthcare as their profession have exhibited unselfish service to our community and have done so with compassionate dignity, such as being by the sides of the suffering loved ones when we could not. And whereas, those trusted healthcare professionals demonstrated their dedication in addressing and relieving the added suffering regardless of knowing they themselves were, have placed themselves and their family at risk. And whereas, these selfless professionals provided us with a sense of comfort and confidence by their commitment to be there when needed and to extend to us their very best. And whereas, our frontline heroes continue to inspire us with their fortitude and in their face of uncertainty and are a source of hope amidst this ongoing travail. And whereas, the greatest increase has been our sense of deep heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for all in the healthcare professional and those supporting them. And whereas, through their constant work and effort, we know the dawn is approaching. Yet while still in the midst of this, it is our desire to express our gratefulness to these committed and consummate professionals and those supporting them. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Leighton City, through and with the mayor and city council hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation and gratitude to those healthcare professionals seeing us through this pervasive and painful pandemic. In addition to that, I would also like to thank all of those that are on the front lines as well as our grocery workers, our, there's just been a numerous amount of folks that have quite honestly put their lives on the line, and we do appreciate it and want to acknowledge them. So we have a proclamation here, acknowledge all those folks that have helped us through this pandemic thus far. Okay, Council, we'll now move on to item number four, which is our citizen comments. This portion of our comments is for comments that are on items that are not currently on our agenda. So with that, I'll turn the time over to our citizens for any type of presentation or comments that, for attention they'd wish to bring to us.
Hi, I'm Linda Crismer, and this is my husband Jim Crismer and our two retired war dogs, CWD Mazi and CWD Jelly, NDD, they were both narcotics dogs in Kuwait. And we're here tonight just to express our personal gratitude and also to speak for the VVA, Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 1079, just to say thank you to Mayor Petro, to the city council, and to the Department of Parks and Recreation for helping us with this magnificent Vietnam War Dog Memorial that we got accomplished in about a year. So we thought, considering the pandemic and everything else, we really had a great opportunity to get that done. We had a soft dedication, I don't know if any of you were there, I know that Mayor Petro was there on December 5th, and that was streamed, right?
Yes.
Streamed on Facebook Live. And we are planning our actual dedication on March 13th at 1:00 over at the wall, right by the memorial. And we are just really excited to invite the public to that, and we will have some speakers that will be there that were served in Vietnam, so it should be a pretty amazing event. We chose March 13th because that is Canine Veterans Day. In the working dog community, they recognize March 13th as Canine Veterans Day because it's the day in 1942 that the Army started the Canine Corps. And last year, we approached Representative Carrie Ann Listenby, and she put in a House Joint Resolution, and it went through the House and the Senate, and Utah now officially recognizes March 13th as Canine Veterans Day. And she actually announced this publicly last year on March 13th, so we thought that was an appropriate day to dedicate the statue. We've been told by several sources in the working dog community that Leighton is the only place in the United States that has a permanent Vietnam wall and a memorial to the dogs of Vietnam. So I think that's pretty amazing. It just gives me chills to say that, that it's right here in Leighton. So we are thrilled with that, and to all of you that helped us out with this project, we just really appreciate your help, your support, and especially to Dave, Jo Ellen, the two Michelles, and Ryan over at Parks and Rec. They were a wonderful team to work with, and we are just very pleased with how that turned out. It's very emotional when you go over and visit it, and if you look at the bricks around the base of the statue, there are 40 small biographies of dogs that served in Vietnam. And actually, our speaker that we will be having in March, his dog is memorialized on a brick, as well as another man that lives down in Centerville, and both of them were handlers in Vietnam. So I want to share with you a poem that touches my heart, and when we plan this event, I want it to be emotional. I want people to realize why this is so important, because if you're not aware, almost 5,000 American dogs were left in Vietnam when the United States pulled out. And so this poem just summarizes, it's told by a dog. It's called "I Wait By The Gate." "In a strange land I was sent, not knowing my fate; in a pen I was put, and I sat by the gate. I watched and I wondered, 'What do I do now?'" Then I looked up and saw you as you walked up with a smile. "We trained and we worked, and I showed you my best; you rewarded me and petted me, and I did the rest. Through trails and paths and roads we did go, I was to smell for traps that would blow. Many times I stopped you from ending your life, from an enemy tripwire that was set to end your life. Never have I thought that we would ever part because of the love we had in our hearts. Oh, I was proud to walk by your side, with all of your friends being your guide. Then one day you put me back in my pen, you smiled, you petted me, and said goodbye, my friend. You looked back one more time, I saw a tear in your eye. I knew it was the last, it was your way of saying goodbye. My life it so changed when you went back home, and I've stayed behind to a fate still unknown. It's been over 50 years since I've seen your face, but I never forgot you, my friend, my mate. So please don't worry, I'm waiting by heaven's gate for my best friend, my brother, but mainly my mate." That touches the hearts of Vietnam War Dog handlers. So thanks to all of you for allowing us to get this project done.
I want to especially thank you folks. I know that this was a personal and very emotional task for you to take on, and the fact that you've really brought attention, not only to our city, but to the entire state on the purpose of these dogs and the value they served in that war. And I just want to point out one thing that this particular statue, which Linda, I know you've expressed before, that the position of the dog is to look onto the wall, to watch over those soldiers and all those names. So thank you.
And I, like I said at the dedication, I truly believe that as the statue is looking at the wall, he's seeing the faces of 5,000 Vietnam-era dogs that never made it home looking back at him. And so that's why it speaks to us so dearly. So here's a picture of Mazi. Mazi is the model of the statue, and you can tell by the floppy ear. And I truly believe that the artwork says, "I see those dogs looking back at me that were left behind." So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other citizens' comments at this point? Okay, seeing that there's none, oh, hold on. Mr. Daniel.
Hey, guys. Sorry, that's a hard act to follow.
Yes.
I hesitated not coming up here. 233 Cold Creek Way. My name is Daniel Denhalter. Just to bring up and reiterate the same position that I've reiterated a few times to this council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. To bring to light that there's a continuing problem on the road of Cold Creek Way, which houses two schools and a handful of parks, there's significant speeding, significant issues that are happening on that. I know that you guys have all heard this, I'm really kind of iterating this for the record. We've seen a decrease in police presence over the last few weeks. And just to add to it, we also have a handful of special needs individuals who live directly on that street, who, part of their, their therapy is to ride a bike on there, and they're relatively safe, but when they can't get out of the way fast enough for some of these speeding vehicles. I'm pleading with the council and proposing the solutions that I proposed a few weeks ago again, in hopes that we can rectify something before something more drastic happens. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other citizens' comment? Okay, being that there's none, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number five, which are consent items. We have three of them before us. However, what I'd like to do, Council, is just deal with items A and B at this point. Item C, I'd like to defer until we have our hearing, since it has to do with the water rates. Council, are you in agreeance with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So with that, let's go ahead and go on to item A, which will be presented by Mr. Colburn, which has to do with the bid award.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I bring before the council tonight Resolution 2105, Bid Award to Yarborough Construction Incorporated for the Leighton Sidewalk Improvements Projects at various locations throughout the city. Resolution 2105 authorizes the execution of an agreement between Leighton City and Yarborough Construction Incorporated for the Leighton City Sidewalk Improvements. The project includes the installation of sidewalk, curb and gutter, asphalt, and all incidental work associated with this sidewalk installation. There are three separate work areas associated with this project. King Street, just off of Gentile, on the west side of the road, about where the Stamps live, for those that are aware of that area. Angel Street, the part out by Angel Street, where it ties into Camelot and that Leighton Park, that small park there by the freeway. And Leighton Hills Parkway, out by the mall, on the west side of Close to Vita, and then you head up 700 to behind Target, headed towards where the city owns property for the future substation. Five bids were received, with Yarborough Construction Incorporated submitting the lowest responsive, responsible bid in the amount of $118,739. The engineer's estimate was $100,000, and staff would recommend council adopt Resolution 2105.
Okay, Council, do you have any questions?
Just a quick question, Terry, on that, on the King Street one, that's from Stamps to Gentile, correct?
Yes.
So we still have the section north?
No.
On the east?
The east side.
On the east side of the road?
Right, correct. This is on the west side of the road.
Going south, okay.
Yeah, I think they've already got it marked out.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item B, which Mr. Dave Price, who is acknowledged earlier for his department, as well as himself, who is our Parks Director, will be presenting the acceptance proposal of an agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I have the honor of being able to introduce Resolution 2103. Resolution 2103 will accept and approve an agreement between Leighton City and PEPG Consulting for Professional Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Supervision for the proposed trail connections to the pedestrian culvert being constructed as part of US Highway 89 project. Utah Department of Transportation is currently engaged in the construction of US Highway 89. Leighton City has requested a betterment within the scope of the project, consisting of the construction and installation of a pedestrian box culvert to be located under Highway 89 at approximately 2700 North Hobbs Creek Drive. And so on the map that you see there, the connection or the underpass is at the bottom of the map. So Leighton City proposes to build new trail connections to the pedestrian box culvert. The trail connection shall be designed to connect the new pedestrian underpass to Valleyview Drive, located on the east side of Highway 89, and 2700 North and Hobbs Creek Drive on the west side of Highway 89. A request for proposal for engineering design services that included preliminary design, design development, construction documentation, and construction supervision services was distributed to all interested firms. Two professional engineering firms responded to the RFP by turning in a proposal and a sealed bid. Both firms were given the opportunity to be interviewed and to present their proposal. The proposals and interviews were evaluated and scored by five individuals using predetermined weighted criteria, scoring criteria. PEPG Consulting received a score of 52.5 out of 70 possible points in the technical proposal evaluation. Once the technical proposal evaluation was completed, the fee proposals were opened. Fees were valued at 30% of the overall score. Each firm's fee was given a numeric score based on their relative placement within the range of fees provided by each firm. Proposed fees for this project ranged from a low of 37,375 to a high of 54,160. PEPG's consulting fee of $37,375 was the lowest and received a numeric score of 30 out of 30 points. The combination of technical proposal score of 52.5 and a fee proposal score of 30 gave PEPG Consulting the highest overall score of 82.5 points out of 100. This evening, staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 2103, authorizing the city manager to conduct negotiations and execute an agreement between Leighton City and PEPG Consulting for the Professional Engineering Services for the Design and Construction Supervision for the new trail connections to be located at approximately 2700 North and Hobbs Creek Drive. Any questions?
I have one. So under the construction oversight, it says with the addition of possible retaining walls, and it talks about some additional construction oversight by a structural engineer and all of that. And then if you read down further in the document, when you get down to the tasks, task four under construction services and then projects, inclusions, and assumptions, it says, "We assume that no retaining walls will be needed." So what, why do they have construction oversight if they don't think there's going to be retaining walls?
Well, the construction oversight is over the entire project. On the retaining walls, we didn't talk to the consultants, both of these consultants, and all retaining walls four feet or lower will be included in this project. If the retaining wall is above four feet, and that is to be determined by the design that they will do, we will negotiate a price at that time.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, it talks about a kickoff meeting being onsite. Is there a chance that we can attend that?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's what the council would like to do, it, we are unsure of the start time right now for the construction of the project. If you're interested in the start of the design phase, we could also include that.
Okay. I just think it would be kind of interesting to know what's going on, and onsite will give a better feel for, because that is kind of a, you know, topographical, you know, up and down, and it's hard to envision where all this is going to go, so.
It is, and it will change greatly between the time we start the project and it's finished.
The 30% figure of weighting the fee on a 30% basis, is that just consistent in any of the parks' proposals, and how long has that been in effect?
As long as, as I can remember, in our department, we use that basic structure. It allows us to evaluate the firms based on their technical skills and abilities, but then also gives a fairly heavy score to the fees that are offered. As you can see in this selection process, the firm that received the highest technical ability was not the one chosen. The fee in this point, or in this project, was significantly lower, and that swayed our decision.
So Dave, I was just a little concerned with the drives. Where exactly is this project going to start and end?
So currently, we have the betterment, which puts the underpass right through there. The project that we're talking about now is the design of the trail connections that go from the outlet of that underpass down to the sidewalk right here. On the west side, we feel fairly good that that's the alignment that will be determined. It may be closer to the existing sidewalk, depending on what the grades do, but we hope to come out of there and turn as quickly to the south as we can and follow that grade up to the sidewalk. These will be ADA-accessible trails, because we're using federal monies on this project in this area. And on the east side, we will come out of the underpass, and right now, we hope to be able to go north up to Valleyview Drive. And at that point, the trail will cross and go up the existing sidewalk until we can get to Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Point.
So the other dotted line on the west is on the side of the road, correct?
This is the, that will be the existing sidewalk, or is the existing sidewalk this planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Price, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, since we agreed to postpone item C, we are now done with our consent items, so I'll need you to take action. Does anybody like to make a?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we accept consent items A, the bid award to Yarborough Construction for the Sidewalk Improvements Project 1972, Resolution 2105, and the proposal for the agreement between Leighton City and PEPG Consulting, Resolution 2103 for the trail. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to our public hearing portion of our meeting. And first up will be Mr. Chad Wilkinson talking about a rezone request. So, well, go ahead and present.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, this is a rezone request. This is a request to go from CH and RM1 to MU, properties located at 1598 North Main Street. Just give you a brief overview of the location of the property. Shown on the screen in red is the location in relation to the remainder of the city. Here's a little close-up view of that, some of the surrounding uses, Master Muffler here, Dirk's Plumbing here. We've got the bakery store just to the north of these properties. Avalon Drive and Main Street, the intersection is there. One of the questions in the work session was about the signal located close to the property, that's right here, there's a signal. And this location just kind of splits those two properties, a little bit on the north side of the, of the subject property. a little bit on the north side of the subject property. This zone change is being requested by the applicants who own and control this piece of property that was recently zoned by the city council to mixed-use zoning. If you recall that zoning change discussion, we also, that was the impetus of some of our changes to the code related to the types of uses that can go in an MU zone. We've adopted some more flexibility in uses for some of these mixed-use zones in order to facilitate some additional commercial opportunities in those mixed-use zones. So, that's, again, just, that was kind of where that discussion was initiated. Here's a very preliminary conceptual site plan. We're not here to talk about the specifics of the site plan tonight, but just to give you an idea that one of the great opportunities that this particular application gives us is to have a connection out to Avalon Drive for this entire development, one cohesive development there that will all, you know, look and function and be just one unified development there, which is a very appealing aspect of this proposal. Again, just some conceptual ideas of what those buildings might look like. The item before you tonight, though, is about that zone change. The zone change is consistent with our general plan. This is an area that has a mixed-use corridor designation. There's a portion of Main Street that actually encourages the development of mixed uses, including residential and mixed-use developments in order to revitalize and to take advantage of areas that need to have reinvestment. So, this is what the applicant proposes. We are, again, just another conceptual view. We did review this item with the Planning Commission at their meeting about a month ago. They did recommend a positive action by the council to approve this zone change from CH and RM1 to MU. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Counsel, you have any questions?
Well, I've just got something that just dawned on me, Chad, and this isn't really the place, because it's the rezon. But I guess it'll be looked into, is there a benefit to extending that road where the intersection is? Make that a four-way intersection instead of coming out the other street?
Yeah, I believe that's what they're looking at. Is that correct, Steve? The other, there would be a benefit to have that driveway line up there as well, if there is to be a driveway there. That's kind of UDOT's territory on this one, but...
Okay.
Yes, that is something that's being considered. Thank you.
Mayor.
Sure.
Chad, thank you. Question, why didn't, why wasn't this part of the rezon when the other part was?
Just two different property owners, so it was just a matter of...
Oh, they were different property owners.
So, just a matter of approaching that other property owner, yep.
And any of the concerns that the Planning Commission shared regarding commercial are pretty much handled, because we've made the text amendments to make it more feasible for commercial use, and that's the purpose of a mixed-use zone.
That's right.
So, I mean, it seems to be, to fit right within what we're trying to accomplish, so that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Thanks.
Seeing that there's none, this is a public hearing. What I'd like to do is deal with each item individually. So, if, counsel, I'd need action to open up this public hearing, so we can make comment.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we open a public hearing on this rezon request.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So, this brings us to the public portion of item A, our rezon request. Should anybody have any comments on just this first item, you're welcome to stand up to either side of the diocese here and state your name and address for the record. And when you're through speaking, if you could, please take one of the wipes and wipe the mic down in the area where you just stood. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Tom Tudor, 1757 Gregory Drive, Leighton, Utah, 84041. I live up there first house on Gregory and Main Street. So, I am concerned, since I'm a retired Leighton police officer, how many children are going to get hit there? Right now, you have two lady crossing guards for all of Aveo Elementary School. Some of them have almost been injured and everything, et cetera. You know them if you worked them for 20 years like me on accidents. So, I would watch careful that maybe you study for the interest of the American people of Leighton, Utah, and how many children will have accidents. And I think you're going to have to, if you put in traffic lights, because I've been there for 54 years. I would just sentimental, and I don't like to see children hit in the crosswalks. So, I add that, two cents worth, to the great Leighton City Council and the mayor. And maybe I'll look into that a little bit about crosswalks. They're not even painted there, if you ever drive up there. And I have observed your two ladies that are crossing guards there. They do their best that they can with what they have. But if you start building places and getting a populace in class, I know people think about money, but I think about children. So, you might think of that a little bit up there in that area of North Main Street, you know? And the street going into my subdivision in Aveo Elementary School is 1600 there, with the playground and everything outside there of your Aveo Park, which has a lot of picnics, and they're great, and the city's doing great for the Aveo Park out there where I live. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit, open up the thoughts for that, so that you do consider, one, the land there, two, the streets there, three, the lights are there, four, the police guarding ladies that are working there to save the children's lives, and take all that into consideration. I rest to you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there any other comments regarding item A, the rezon request? Nothing online, right? Okay. Counsel, being that there's none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and take action.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the rezon request, ordinance 2106 at 1598 North Main Street.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I will take a roll call vote on this. Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yeah.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Bloxum?
Yes.
Councilman...
Aye.
It passes unanimously, so thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to item B, which would be the water rate increase. And I think with that, we're going to actually have a presentation by Mr. Tracy Probert. Now, obviously, we've had several presentations on this, but we do recognize the fact that there are new folks that are here, as well as added interests. So, I thought it would be in our best interest to go ahead and have Tracy give us a recap on what's, and Steve Jackson, excuse me, as far as what's taken place so far and the meaning behind it. So, Tracy and Steve?
Madam Mayor and counsel, good to be with you again tonight. Just wanted to, I guess, refresh everyone's memories that haven't, or that have seen this, and then also present the presentation again. Wanted to start out kind of making a point of emphasis, the water system that Leighton City has is one of the finest in the state, if not the finest in the state. It is, meets every single state requirement, federal requirement, for water quality and for just overall operations efficiency. And so, it is an extremely important system for Leighton City. It's one of the few systems Leighton City owns that touches every single person's life that enters our city every day, whether they live here, whether they visit here, whether they travel through here. Water is the lifeblood of what we do. As a little bit of history about our water master plan. Twenty, or 2008 was the last time our water master plan had been updated. We initiated a review of that water master plan in order to ensure that what we were doing as a city met the goals and the needs of all the citizens of Leighton. And so, we took a comprehensive look at our water resources and our water master plan. And in October 2013, we awarded a contract to Bowen Collins &amp; Associates, one of the leading water engineering firms in the area, to help us evaluate our water system and our water resources to come up with a master plan that would take us into the future. In September, between September 2014 and April of 2017, we had multiple presentations, discussions, at work meetings, council meetings, strategic planning meetings, that were all open to the public, available for people to join and make comment and kind of help direct the direction of this water master plan. In June of 2017, we held a water master plan public hearing, similar to the public hearing we're having tonight, for the water master plan. And in July 2017, the master plan was adopted by the council at the time. The first, or part of that water master plan was the rate increases that we are talking about, the third one tonight. The first increase became effective in November of 2018. With that, we reevaluated the model, the master plan, and in 2019, presented an analysis of those first, that first year of the water rates. The second water rate increase became effective November of 2019. And in November of 2020, we did the same thing. We evaluated the rates again to ensure that they were in line with the model, in line with the needs of the system. Throughout 2020, we gave multiple presentations on the water master plan and the rate study in various forms through work meetings, council meetings, during budget discussions and such. And then tonight, we're talking about the third water rate increase that was proposed to become effective in November 2020. With that, I'm going to maybe hand it over to Tracy to address some of the comments that we've heard up to this point, and then we'll jump into the presentation of the needs for those water rate increases and the plan.
So, mayor members of the council approaching this meeting, you requested a public hearing tonight at our last meeting. And so, since last meeting in this one, we've received various citizen comments. The number one comment, obviously, being, "Do not increase my water rate." So, the remainder of the comments could be summarized in a few different categories, and we thought we would address those tonight to try and answer some of the questions that came up. One of those comments was that I feel I'm unfairly penalized because I don't have access to secondary water. My answer that I've given on the slide is kind of short and doesn't really address the whole thing. Mr. Jackson's addressed the fact that there was a master, a water master plan and rate study. And in that rate study, this perceived inequity between those who have access to secondary water and those who do not was addressed. Those who produced the rate study looked at Leighton City residential and commercial consumption. They used our data to produce different types of models of the levels of consumption and what percentages of the accounts were at those different levels. And through all of this analysis of the two different types of users, those with and those without secondary, they were able to structure our current tiered system. And so, they established a different set of tiers for those with secondary and tiers for those without. And the purpose of all that was to help address some sort of an inequity between those with and without. I guess one perception out there is that somehow secondary water is free, right? Secondary water is paid for by those who have access to it. And so, that was calculated into this as well, the cost of that secondary water. And then also in discussions with water management people in the area, mostly Weber Basin Water, there's a reasonable amount of water that each person should use on their given piece of property based on the amount of green space they have and so forth. And Weber Basin would be able to make those recommendations to any property owner in the city, and they do so free of charge without being a... Basically, we're all customers of Weber Basin Water, which will be explained a little later, but, you know, they're willing to do that. So, all of that considered, the plan addressed the fact that people who do not have access to secondary water are not being unfairly penalized because of that, as long as they're reasonable users. Obviously, the one disadvantage you have is that someone with secondary water could potentially use as much as they want because it's not currently being metered in most places. That's not the responsible way to use secondary water, but that would be one disadvantage that culinary water users have. So, that addresses number one. Sorry, that was the long answer, right?
Tracy, could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Where in our tier system do we figure is reasonable outdoor water usage?
So, we set that top tier at 80,000 gallons. And so, before you jump into the highest level of the tier structure, you can use up to 80,000, and it breaks off at different levels. I don't have them memorized to know what those levels are. They're in the consolidated fee schedule as far as where those breaks are in the pricing structure. But what we did, what the consultant did, and then we confirmed, was that 50% of the users of the system use a certain number of gallons, right? And then 75, and then 80, and then 95%. And so, 80,000 gallons falls into about 90% of the users. You know, there's always going to be those people that are the outliers, and there's a number of them. And in other presentations that we've given, we've shown how, after that first year, we did an analysis, and we actually adjusted those tiers a bit, right? To try and even address more that potential inequity. And so, by adjusting those tiers, we're attempting to capture more of the people. They're still going to be the outliers, right? They're still going to be the people that just don't care, right? They want to turn their sprinkler on, and they want to forget about it. They don't want to have to worry about how long it was running or how much water they're actually putting on the lawn. So, anyway, hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, the second thing, why can't I access secondary water, was another main concern that was expressed. As we've discussed, and we'll discuss here in a few minutes, integrating secondary water, the resources that are available in the city, is one of the major components of the master plan that was adopted. That is what will allow us to keep the rates low in the long term, is utilizing this secondary water. So, that's going to be done in areas that it's feasible to be done. So, we're not saying that secondary will be available across the entire city, because there's some areas where it's just not feasible to do that. But where it is, this plan is structured to do that. Another comment that was made regularly was that Leighton City has the highest water rates around. So, if Mr. Jackson could proceed to the next slide. We've shown this a few times back in 2017. Sometimes where people get confused is they're not, they're not really comparing apples to apples. If you were to go out across all of these cities and just look at their base, what they call a base rate, they may appear to be lower than Leighton City, but many of those provide zero water for that base rate. Our base rate, for those that use exclusively culinary, is 10,000 gallons. So, as I put this information together, I said, "How much would it cost to get 10,000 gallons in each of these cities?" If you look at the column on the right, today's numbers, you can see that without a 10% increase, we're at the bottom of the list. So, to say that we're more expensive than anywhere else is not an accurate statement. We are, in fact, for this amount of water, the cheapest out of those 20 or 20-plus cities that are listed there, all of which are Davis County cities and cities of similar size to Leighton throughout the state.
Trace?
Yes.
10,000 gallons is per a month?
Per month, yes. So, one question that came up, actually, a few phone calls to my office from mostly HOAs, because they've had to plan for these increases. And so, they, a few of them called in and said, "Now, is this increase in addition to the increase that was already approved?" So, as Mr. Jackson mentioned, the three increases were adopted as part of the master plan. They did still need to be put in the budget each year, and so, that's the process that we've gone through. But the answer to that is, no, there is not, there hasn't been a 10% and now another 10% increase. It was just the three original increases that were part of the master plan. Another concern, why has my bill doubled in the past 10 years? The short answer to that is, the overall... The short answer to that is, the overall bill has about doubled over the last ten years for all utilities. About half of that can be attributed to pass-through costs from North Davis Sewer District, who had about seven years of increase during those ten years. Maybe it was six, don't want to be misquoted. But, and then Wasatch Integrated, that handles the disposal of solid waste. So Waste Management collects, and then they take it to Wasatch Integrated for processing. That made up the other, you know, part of it that was passed through to the city. So those costs just have to go straight through to the residents. You know, we don't have any additional money to cover that. And then water increases over that ten-year period do make up thirty-two percent of the change in the monthly bill. Another concern, I heard the city transfers excess water revenue to the general fund. It's important to note that all of the city's utility systems are required to be financially self-sufficient. So rates have to be structured in order for those utilities to stand on their own. They are not to be subsidized by the general tax dollars of the city or by any other outside funding. That's why we structure the rates the way we do. The city allocates costs for administrative overhead to each of those utilities. The water utility does not have its own accounting staff. They don't have their own IT. They don't have their own legal department. They don't have their own human resource department. They don't have their own engineers. So those costs are allocated to each of the utilities, water, sewer, storm, refuse, and streetlight.
Just for clarification for people who might be watching, when you say that our utility systems are required to be financially self-sufficient, you're meaning by statute?
Well, they should be, right? And so I don't know that there's an actual statute out there that I could quote, there may be, that says that they have to be, but they should be, right? We shouldn't be using tax dollars, because then you're going to have people in here saying, well, charge me more for water and lower my property taxes, right? It's just the opposite effect. So it's best to have it stand alone. Right? Okay, so the next concern was development is being subsidized by higher water rates. Why can't we slow down development? It's important to note that development generally pays for itself. Developers pay impact fees, building fees, water exaction fees, or they provide water shares. So they have to bring their own water to the table in order to have a development, and they build all their own infrastructure within their development. One important thing to note about why can't we slow down development? Well, the city can't prohibit a landowner from developing their property as long as they're following the general plan of the city, right? There's obviously stipulations when someone brings a development plan in, it's reviewed, it's vetted, it's gone over, there's different development standards and so forth. But if someone decides they're done being a farmer, and they want to develop their land, and it falls within the general plan, the city can't say, no, we're not going to allow that, right? That's against their rights as a landowner. So that would be that. So those were the main six categories of concern that we found when we read some of the comments that came into the website over the last couple of weeks. And I'll let Mr. Jackson proceed then.
So in order to kind of understand what we're trying to accomplish with the water rates, we have to first understand what we were doing with the Water Master Plan. And the Water Master Plan was a very comprehensive look at our water system, our water resources, and the future supply and demand projections that we have. We contracted with Bowen Collins &amp; Associates, like I mentioned, who are one of the leaders of water engineering here in the area. And they also partnered with Zions Bank Public Finance in order to ensure that the financial side of the plan and the documentation was on sound footing from a financial standpoint. Again, Zions Bank Public Finance is one of the leaders in public finance projects here in the area. So we took a look at our existing water system. We took a look at our supply and demand projections for the future build-out of the city. We all know that Leighton is growing, and it continues to grow, and so we need to make sure we can meet the demands that are placed on the system. With that, we look at the water sources that are available, both the existing and the potential future water sources that we have, and then how do we deliver that to the residents of the city? Peak supply and demand projections are really important. They are required to be analyzed by the state Division of Drinking Water so that our system can meet the demands of the system as the peak demands occur during the day, as everybody tries to get up and eat breakfast and shower and those things. The distribution system evaluation was done in order to look at our system and say, do we have existing deficiencies? Are there areas that we need to improve that are currently developed? And then what do we need to do in the future to make those recommended system improvements to accommodate the growth that is coming through the city? And so the deliverables that were obtained through this process was a ten-year capital facilities plan, an impact fee analysis, and a rate study. As part of that plan, they mapped our system. This is an existing system map that we have, all of the lines shown in different colors of the different water lines that the city has that are culinary drinking water lines. There's other symbols on there for our wells, our tanks, our PRV stations, the colored background colors are the zones. We have twenty different pressure zones in the city. So the city water system, it covers the entire footprint of Leighton City, but it also covers a vertical elevation change of over eight hundred feet. So it's not a system that you just get to lay out on a flat piece of land and say, here it is. There's twenty different pressure zones that our staff has to manage and take care of, because there are regulations about how high the pressures can be, how low the pressures can be, and how the water can be delivered. So a little bit of, I guess, statistics for the system, and I'm going to use some words, and I guess I should clarify upfront. When I talk about an acre foot of water, that's enough water to cover one acre of land, one foot deep, and it's equivalent to about three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water, about three hundred and twenty-five, twenty-six thousand gallons. So just to put that in perspective, as I use the term acre foot, that's what we're referring to, is about three hundred and twenty-five, twenty-six thousand gallons. So the system is estimated at a replacement value of two hundred and sixty-five million dollars, a substantial investment over the years the city has made and developers have made as they built the system. The city covers twenty-two point four eight square miles, and like I mentioned, it's a vertical elevation change of over eight hundred feet. We have almost two hundred and seventy-five miles of pipe. So to put that in perspective, the UDOT presentation we had just a little while ago, they put in about, I think they said, six or seven miles of pipe for us, a replaced pipe. But we have two hundred and seventy-five miles of pipe that we have to maintain, ranging anywhere from four to twenty-four inches in diameter. Thirty-three hundred hydrants that provide fire protection to our citizens. The annual audit that the Fire Department goes through, we are ranked as the highest score we can for our water system for operability and for pressures and flows that we have. Save substantial money on insurance rates for people who have to buy insurance for fire protection here in the city. Thirty-seven hundred valves and two thousand-plus meters that we manage and operate. We also have fifteen storage tanks, twenty-two point four million gallons, nine pump stations that pump almost ten thousand gallons of water a minute, fifty-one pressure-reducing valves, again, mentioning those twenty pressure zones that we have to manage. And then we have five deep-water wells, and those pump about eighty-two hundred gallons a minute. Now, these water wells produce fifty percent of the water that the Leighton City residents use. That's a critical component to our water system, and one of the reasons that we can, quite frankly, keep our water rates where they are is because the cost for us to pump those wells is approximately fifty percent of what it costs for us to buy water that's treated, surface water. And that is a substantial savings to us. So as the use of those wells increases, it's a savings to everyone in the city who uses our water. Seven Weber Basin connections that produce about fifteen thousand gallons per minute. The water use in 2020 was four point six billion gallons of water. Compared to 2019 usage, it was four point oh six billion gallons. So there's approximately a six million gallon swing in our water consumption between 2019 and 2020. And I think if you recall, the 2020 water year was an extremely dry year, and the 2019 year was an extremely wet year. And so to have the flexibility in our system to move water around during those times when we have a drought, when we have extra water coming off the mountains is critical to our system. Six million gallons, six million, six hundred million gallons, excuse me, of water in one year is a substantial amount to have to account for as we build the system into the future. We'd love to say everything is always average, but it's not, and this is a perfect example of that. We have thirteen certified water operators from the state of Utah, the Level Four Distribution, that's the highest level that you can achieve. It's actually required for the size of our system to have Level Four Distribution operators. Some of those thirteen operators work in my office as engineers and inspectors, and our water crews do an excellent job of operating the system. Some of the existing infrastructure in the secondary system are shown on the map here. The dark black lines are the existing trunk lines that secondary water system providers have currently in the system. As we mentioned, there are different providers that provide secondary water throughout Leighton City, and part of the Master Plan was to evaluate how these different providers can bring together an efficient system that we can operate and make the most efficient use of the resources that are here in Leighton City. Part of that system is, excuse me, if I can get this to, oops, advance, we have pretty major reservoirs in Leighton. We have three exceptionally large reservoirs up on the east side, and then we also have the Davis-Weber Canal Reservoir right in the middle of the city. And each one of those reservoirs contains totaling twenty-seven hundred acre-feet of water storage. So again, do the math, twenty-seven hundred times three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons is how much water is stored just in those reservoirs. As we look at the importance of those reservoirs, we have to look at the water shares, the irrigation shares the city owns. So at the time of the Master Plan completion, we owned about five hundred and seventy shares of water, which equivalent to eighteen hundred acre-feet. As of January twelfth of this year, we had eight hundred and thirteen shares of that water, which equivalent, was equivalent to two hundred and eighteen, excuse me, twenty-eight hundred acre-feet. If you recall the number back here, twenty-seven hundred acre-feet is what is stored there. We now own enough water shares that we could fill the entire set of reservoirs in the city with just the water the city owns. Now, granted, we don't own, we own shares in multiple companies, so it doesn't quite work out that way. But just to put that in perspective, every reservoir in the city could be filled with that water. So out of the Master Plan, we came up with what are considered water demand areas. So this map shows that the blue area is serviced by Weber Basin Water Conservancy District, and Leighton City currently operates that system for Weber Basin. And part of that, we provide secondary water service to our residents within that area. The red area is Case Creek Irrigation's Pressurized Service Area. The green area is the area that is serviced solely by Leighton City Culinary Water, and the yellow area is the Davis-Weber Counties Canal Company Service Area. And then the purple area is the area where we looked at potential growth for the secondary water system and how we can make that growth happen and utilize the water that we have to try and keep these costs as low as possible. Bowen Collins did some population estimates for us, as well as what those requirements would be. And as we looked at all the different scenarios, two scenarios rose to the top. We looked at different scenarios from, you know, pumping our own water and then converting some of these secondary water rights into M&amp;I use, to conservation practices, to creating our own water treatment facility. But these two rose to the top, and one was just to continue using secondary water throughout the city, building it out with just all culinary and ignoring the secondary. And then the other one was to optimize the secondary water use in the city. And as you can see on the bottom line, at build-out, we're estimating that we need twenty-three thousand gallons, or twenty-three thousand acre-feet of water. And from the maximum culinary side, you're going to need twenty thousand and three thousand of secondary. And on the optimized system, you need fifteen thousand and eight thousand. So why do we need to do that? Why do we care? Basically, this map shows the existing demands. The cooler colors, the blues, are the lower water demand areas, and the reds are the higher demand areas. Those are the existing demands based on the existing data that we have from our meters. As we look at the build-out demand and based on our general plan and where we could build to, you can see that many of those areas changed from blue to the orange, just yellow area colors, which are a higher demand. And we need to meet that demand as we want to continue to grow and to thrive as an economy and to have the quality of life that we want. So again, the change is pretty drastic as you look at the slides here. You go from that blue area to the orange. So again, the reminder, twenty-three thousand total acre-foot that we need. If you use all culinary, you need twenty thousand of culinary, and you need three thousand of secondary. If you use secondary, you can use fifteen thousand secondary and eight thousand culinary, or, excuse me, fifteen thousand culinary, eight thousand secondary. Now, as you look at that, we say, what do we have now? Because that's a big question. What do we have access to? So currently, with all the supplies that we have, we have fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand acre-feet of culinary and about four thousand of secondary for a total of just under twenty thousand. And then we looked at the potential for these secondary irrigation companies and what water was available. You can see that is about ten and a half thousand. They're currently owned by the city, is just under four. They have some other long-term obligations we don't think the city would have at sixteen, and then we think there's a potential that Leighton could have another five thousand come to the city. So as we look at those numbers, we have to say, well, what makes the most sense? And this graph shows in the background, those bars are our current culinary supplies that we have. They represent our wells and our contracts we have with Weber Basin. And the darker line on the top is the option one, where we maximize our culinary use. And the option two is the reddish line on the lower end. And as you look at that graph, you see at about twenty thirty-five, our culinary demand exceeds the amount of culinary supply that we have, and then it continues to grow as the demand grows. So we have to decide how to close that gap. If we use the culinary-only scenario, we would have to come up with additional culinary. If we use the optimized secondary scenario, you can see we can convert some of these potential culinary demands into secondary and stay below our current available supply that we have. So what does that look like in a table form? Again, the maximum culinary use would be short forty-one hundred acre-feet of culinary, but we would have fifty-three hundred acre-feet of secondary in excess. And in the optimized scenario, we have approximately a thousand extra culinary acre-feet, and we have just over, just under three hundred secondary acre-feet. Sorry, I bumped the mouse here. So the consultant's recommendation was, instead of going out and trying to create more source or purchase more source of culinary, it was to optimize the secondary use, put the water to use that's already in the city, in these reservoirs, coming out of these canyons that we have here in the city, and make a system, build a system that will accommodate both, and then hopefully keep all of those water rates as low as possible into the future while being sustainable. So why is that important? History of the Weber Basin Wholesale Water that we purchased, we have a great partnership with Weber Basin, but we are their customers, and there's no way to mix that. We buy water from Weber Basin, about fifty percent that we own. And in 2016, we were paying roughly a hundred and ninety-five dollars an acre-foot. Now, in 2021, we're paying two hundred and eighty dollars an acre-foot. So in the last five to six years, we've gone up forty-three percent. Those are direct costs that Leighton City has to pay that need to be passed on, because we're the last in the line, and that's just how the water systems work. One of the issues that we're facing is that the water available from Weber Basin is reaching its limit in the current treatment facilities that are there. And so if we needed to buy more water, say, the forty-one hundred acre-feet that we discussed in that last slide, we would need to buy it at the cost of them having to build some pretty major infrastructure, they call the Bear River Project. That Bear River Project estimate is anywhere from eleven to twelve hundred dollars per acre-foot. That's equivalent to about five million dollars a year just in water costs alone that we would have to pay in order to obtain that water. And then we would still need to build the infrastructure in order to deliver it to our residents. So as we're looking at the available water in the area and the resources that we have, it was critical for us to say, can we avoid buying this really, really expensive water and utilize the water that was in the reservoirs and in the city? And so they came up with a list of culinary water projects. We've talked about those a lot in our different presentations, but each one of those colored lines identify different projects. The projects come up to twenty-six million dollars in build-out costs with about ten million in pipelines, six million in storage reservoirs, pump stations, meter replacements that are required to keep our system functioning, and then some skate upgrades and auxiliary power. keep our system functioning, and then some skate upgrades and auxiliary power. Secondary water projects as part of the optimization of the system would require us to build out in this West Leighton area, secondary culinary, or secondary pipelines that would deliver this water to those residents. And you can see those on the map there in the colored and numbered lines. That project cost is approximately $19 million with a pump station in there for about $675,000 as well. Some of those projects are pretty large projects to get the water to be delivered out there into West Leighton, but then a lot of the build-out of that system occurs through development when the developers put in those lines. So some of the photos we have of projects that were recently completed, this is the water tank that was referenced in our work meeting, Valley View Water Tank and Pump Station in partnership with the US-89 Project. This was constructed and then the pipeline brought up to this facility, a 2 million gallon water tank, approximately $3.5 million project to get that taken care of and built, a critical infrastructure component to the city. Inside there, you can see the pump station in the bottom right corner before it was completed, and then in the top what it looks like now, and then in the lower, excuse me, bottom left corner is the pump station before it was completed. In the bottom right corner is the truck in the center of the water tank, just to give it some perspective as to how big that is. This was the Oak Ridge tank that was reconstructed a few years ago, and then in the bottom right corner is one of our water fill stations that we have valving to. Wells, pumps, large pumps, that center picture is one of our wellhead pumps, water line replacements, that's one of our recently completed Snow Creek water lines. But as part of that project, or as part of our system, we have breaks. We have damage that happens when our water lines break. We have pressures in excess of 120 psi in some parts of our city. And so sometimes you get to see those photos and they make, you know, kind of a big deal for people who live around there, but they're a big deal to get them fixed so that we can have good, quality, sustainable water. And again, our operators take care of this on a daily basis. The center, the photo in the top left on that slide is a pipe that is part of the US-89 Project, 20 feet deep in the ground, that we had to get down to that when it started to leak in order to get it taken care of. And then you can see some of the damage that can occur on the roads and the other facilities that we have when our water mains are, have an issue and they break. Again, in the center photo there, that's a 20-foot-deep water line that needed to be repaired. After that repair was done, we evaluated that line and decided it was time to be replaced and relocated to a better elevation that we can work on it safely and into the future. And then that, that photo on the right shows all of the challenges that our staff goes through. I think there's at least six conduit on top of that water line within, you know, inches that they have to dig around and take, take care of. And I don't know what those conduits have in them, but I'm sure it's important infrastructure as well. And if we were to rip those out, then we would have even more problems than just the water leak that we were fixing there. So some of the system maintenance data that we have is, again, I mentioned the 13 certified operators responded to 2,300 total work orders with 71 broken mains, 167 meter leaks, 390 meter installs, 16 service leaks, 50 fire hydrant repairs, 62 pressure quality calls, and then 3,000 courtesy inspection, move-in, move-outs, and others. So when people call and say, hey, we've got an issue with our water system or our water quality in our home, we go and check it out. And a lot of times, it's not a city issue per se, but it's something that is affecting our residents, and so we do our best to help them and to try and keep them, or give them the tools and resources they need, whether we refer them to professionals that can help them or kind of troubleshoot their, their systems to, to make sure that what we're providing to them is that continued quality. So with that, the consultant came up with a projected budget for our system and what it would require to maintain and upkeep. And you can see there, it's about $3 million for that, that conveyance and storage capital investment project. Now, in our, in our rate study that we did, we've, we've cut that down to the bare bones to try and make sure that these rates stay reasonable and effective. And, and so that number at the beginning of our rate analysis is closer to $1 million, and then it works its way up to around $2 million as we go through our 10-year plan. Again, $3.5 million for the culinary system every year, just in, in capital budget recommendations. And then there's the secondary component, which is a million, 1.3 million per, per year for those 10 years to construct these 10-year window projects on the secondary system. So with that, that's the master plan and the impact fee analysis that was done, and I'm going to turn it over to Tracy for the rate study goals that we have.
Hang in there, we'll just take a couple more minutes, is all. We did feel like it was important information for those who might be listening, given it's a public hearing, though, so. The goals of the rate study, we've talked a little bit about that. We need to make sure that the rates are sufficient to operate, maintain, and expand the top-rated system that we have. It's not good enough to have, you know, an adequate system. You have to have a very good system that can flex, as we saw, 600 million gallons in one year, just based on Mother Nature. Is it affordable to the users? Is it in line with state conservation requirements, which is why we implemented tiers? Does it minimize the need for debt? Leighton City's always been proud of the fact that we hold very little debt, and we like to keep it that way. Does it provide for adequate reserves? Prior to the implementation of this Water Master Plan and Rate Study, the reserves were getting to a point of concern, and so that needed to be addressed, and then secure the water needs of the future. As we look at the, the rate analysis, it meets many of these things, right? The revenue requirements, the user demand and historical patterns, connections, cost of service, the tier system, affordability, amount in our reserve, as I mentioned. It addressed base and excess rates in multiple, multiple scenarios, and ultimately came up with some rate recommendations. Financial coverage is obviously one of the main objectives. As I talked about earlier, the utility needs to be able to stand on its own, and the way it does that is by establishing rates that allow it to. And so as we looked at this chart, which we presented many times, the red equalling operations, non-operational costs, capital costs, there's a gray line in the middle there. You can see that's where our rates were back before we adopted the Water Master Plan, and those rates were going to continue forward flat. Obviously, we wouldn't have allowed them to continue forward absolutely flat, but that was the representation. With the increases, that thinner line that heads up and then, you know, stays slightly above the large block columns is the projected revenue after rate increases. And so you can see that that revenue is able to keep itself just above and sometimes just below the needed expenditures, but in the, in the above times, we're obviously building reserve to cover those other times. These were the projections that were put out there based on the rate, the rate structure that was chosen. Go ahead. So in that rate structure and what's proposed with the 10% rate increase that's been put out there is to move the base rate for most residential customers that are on three-quarter meter, three-quarter inch meters from $20.80 a month to $22.90 per month, $2.10. Go back to this slide just briefly to show where we stand compared to those around us. Now, we would make the statement that Leighton City does not set rates based on where other people are at. I show this slide just simply to show that this isn't just a Leighton City issue, right? You can see that every one of those rates over the last three-year period has increased. And so we're not alone in this, and we're, and, and the city is not trying to push increases all by itself as some sort of an anomaly, right? So ultimately, the rate study, to summarize and finalize, I'm sure you're happy about that. The goal, you know, are the rates sufficient to operate, maintain, and expand? Yes, we've looked at the financial projections. The hybrid system was chosen as the most affordable way to provide water to the citizens and users in the community. The tiered structure allows us to be within state law and state conservation requirements. Minimizing the need for debt allows us to maintain our flexibility and our ability to respond to the needs of the system. It provides adequate reserves, and it secures the water we need into the future. With that, that would be the end of our presentation. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and you can proceed accordingly.
Okay. That was not the Reader's Digest version, but that's okay. I think everybody got a great education here. So this is a continuation of our public hearing. So therefore, I know, Council, you have asked many questions before regarding this. I don't know that you feel the need, does anybody feel the need to ask any additional questions right now? Okay. Oh, excuse me, there is one question.
Actually, it's two. Actually, it's more than that, but I'm just going to ask the two at this point. So your proposal on the 10% is not just the base, I just want this clarified, it's 10% within each of the tiered usages. Okay.
Correct.
And then, actually, I'm going to ask three. The $600 million, or 600 million gallons used more in 2019, we're trying to blame it all on a drought year, but was some of that not due to the 100-plus homes that all of a sudden got moved into in 2019 and put in yards? And we're also paying the water bill. So I don't think we can blame the increase solely on a drought year. I think, I think some of that water was paid for by, by residents because they, they moved in or new businesses, whatever. But a question on development, as you guys were going through this, I don't know that I've thought about. One of you made a comment that development pays for the growth, so they pay for the infrastructure, impact fees, whatever. So is there money in this budget that the city also pays for, for growth, that is then not compensated back by new residents or new businesses that move in?
Sure. The, the rate structure has to, the system has to be able to expand to accommodate the growth in the city. And so, yes, the rate, you know, at times, we have to build it, you know, build a new tank, increase the size of that, add pump stations, add pressure stations. Mr. Jackson's probably more suited to answer this question, but yes, within the rates, it's considering the build-out of the system, right?
That be it? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. This is our public hearing, and so therefore, I want to open it up to public comment. I appreciate the social distancing, folks. I, you know, I commend you on that. And as you've seen, we've got wipes here, so should you get, come up to the podium, make sure when you're finished that you actually wipe it down. I also would like to acknowledge Senator Stevens out there, and...
I do have a comment on this this evening.
Okay. As stated in a public comment, we'd like you to approach the podium. Please state your name. Yeah, starting with the senator, and your address for the record.
Thank you. I assume I can take the mask off for the presentation?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Gosh sakes, this brings back a lot of memories, folks. I spent a lot of time here and over a period, over a lot of years. And my name is Jerry Stevenson. I live at 466 South 1700 West Leighton. And I'm here tonight because I'm one of the largest water users in this, in the city. I have a, I have a bill probably, my guess is, it's probably larger than everyone in here's bill put together every month. I stated when I left City Hall, I was mayor here for quite a few years, and this goes back 16 years ago, so no one remembers me, but, but when I left, I, I'd stated to staff that I would not come back unless it was really important because I'd inflicted enough of my ideas and my long-windedness and my stories off on enough people that I didn't think that was necessary that I come back and, and do that again. So, but what I'm here for this evening is we really do have an important issue before us. And this isn't just Leighton City, this is statewide. And I deal with as a Utah State Senator on a fairly regular basis. We have a water issue in the state, and we have a growth issue in the state, and it will be solved in several ways. But one of the ways it will be solved is by wise people making wise decisions. I have a business that uses quite a bit of water. I will tell you, I lose no sleep over trying to figure out how to pay the increase that they're proposing here this evening. But I do lose sleep helping pay for a system that doesn't work. And in this community, this system works. You face a lot of tough decisions as city councilors and city, and a mayor. You make a lot of difficult decisions. You talk, you talk a lot about rates and systems and garbage pickups and the equipment that you buy and a big budget, and there's a lot of things that you get involved with. And you're elected not always to make the most citizen-friendly decision, but to make the wisest decision that affects the community. I'm not here advocating a water rate increase, but I will tell you that without water, none of us survive well. I was asked by the city several months ago to come and be part of the centennial celebration. And I talked about the development of Leighton and the contest that went on between Leighton and Caseville for several years. And this goes back into the 1870s, 80s, 90s, up until we became a city in 1920. And I will tell you that the impetus in the center of almost all of those discussions and the reason we became a community is because of water. And why water is important to us is because it was delivered to us in a canal system. And I learned in that process that there is no natural drainage off of the Wasatch Front between Caseville and the Weaver River, between Case Creek and the Weaver River. What you're doing here tonight is probably one of the most important decisions you will make. And I think, I appreciate the opportunity I had to serve this community. We raised a lot of rates, contentious hearings at times, but I think all of us that live here can recognize the quality of this community. I deal with the communities across the state of Utah, and there are very few that are not envious of the situation this community is in. A lot of that is because of the lack of debt that we have. If we wait and we don't raise rates in proportion, what really happens is we get into a situation to where we have to go borrow money, and then we're not only faced with a rate increase, but we're faced with an interest rate to pay with it. This community is in amazing condition. It's recognized nationwide, not just Utah-wide, for the amount of debt that we do not carry. I think that's important. I've made this statement more than once today as I've addressed different groups. The state of Utah is in amazing financial condition. There are only 49 other states that would like to be in the same situation. And there are probably only 165 cities in the state of Utah that would like to be in the situation Leighton is in. I'm not going to spend any more time, I think, but, but I do, I am concerned about maintaining this system. The water is going to go up. Weber Basin, we look at what they're doing and what's happening with the Bear River Pipeline. We have two undeveloped water sources left in the state of Utah. Our ancestors were very wise in putting the rest of them together. The two are the Bear River System, and we have a lot of water left down in Lake Powell, which we really don't have much access to here. So I would just urge you as a council this evening, as you, as you deliberate this, remember that we have to maintain this system. And it's, it's, it's easy to complain about rates going up two bucks a month, but it's really, it's really easy to complain about a system that doesn't work and that is inadequate. I congratulate you for, first of all, for running for election. That's not an easy thing to do all the time. But secondly, I congratulate for the decisions you're making. You have a great staff here that gives you good information, and you were able to act on that information, you act on it wisely. That's much appreciated, it's appreciated from the state. I appreciate being able to use Leighton City, my community, as an example as to what can go on and how a city should be operated. Thank you very much for indulging me for just a few minutes this evening. I believe I meet with the Chamber of Commerce at seven in the morning, so I don't think I'm going to stick around, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't expect applause. I may have somebody here that don't agree with me.
Well, you got a gentleman that I'm sure served underneath you there that's appreciative of your service.
Just wipe this down.
While, while you're wiping down there, I do want to make a statement here that I probably should have stated earlier, that being that this was a public hearing that has been opened and we accepted all online comments, I want everyone to know that those comments that we have received electronically will be part of the minutes in addition to what you guys are willing to speak here tonight. So I just want that to be known, and that obviously that's how we arrived at some of the commonality as far as what was coming through on those comments. So with that, I would accept... So with that, I would accept any additional comments that you folks would like to share with us regarding our water rate.
Madam Mayor, I think it would be good to know, note that they, we have them printed form here, those that have, we've received prior to the meeting as well.
Yeah, good point. So I want you all to know that all of those comments were distributed amongst the entire council and myself, and that they were read. And again, that's how we kind of derived at some of those commonalities. As well as I want you to know that we do have Mr. Crane that are monitoring any additional comments that should come in electronically. So with that, do you want to go ahead and state your name and your address for the record?
Hi, I'm Amy Jones. My address is 2 East 2350 North Lane, Utah. I think right now we shouldn't increase the water bill because we're in a pandemic, and I think it would be better to do it later, but more do it, not at all. But yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, should, does anybody else like to comment? What we can do is obviously rotate back and forth so that it gives you an opportunity to wipe it down. And thank you for that.
Hi, my name's Jeff Bradford. I live 288 East or 275 North here in Leighton, just off of Fort Lane and 1325. And it's probably good to have heard the presentation by fine people that did a lot of homework to provide that because after having heard that, I have a lot less to say about it. But I will, I do have a few comments that I will say is I live in a cul-de-sac off of 1325, and consequently, because of that, I never got secondary water into that cul-de-sac. I never got cable TV. I don't have streetlights. So a lot of things that I pay taxes on, but I don't have any benefit from that. So I just get to watch my neighbors have the benefit of that. And I'm glad to hear that, that things are being considered, that, you know, how inequities that we have are trying to be remedied. And that's what I'd expect, and I appreciate those considerations, you know. I guess the other question I had was, so as I looked at the graph, it looked like the revenue was a little higher than, than cost right now for this year. Is there any plans to, I know we're talking about expanding the secondary water out in West Leighton and all that, and, and that seems like a, a smart thing to do for, for future projections, conservation of water supplies and all that. But us folks that are still, I would love to have secondary water if I could get it, you know. But my understanding is if I want to pay to trench all the way down my cul-de-sac to my house, then I'm, can be one of them lucky people that gets it, you know. The construction, you know, impact fees are paid to the city so that all those utilities and services can be brought in. That doesn't happen all the time. It didn't happen in my, what, I don't know what happened to the impact fees that were paid on my development, my area, but they weren't used to my benefit or for the purposes that they were paid. I kind of, kind of got left out of that plan and benefit, plan to, you know, to offset any impacts that my development had on the city. It didn't, we just paid the impact fee, but we didn't get the benefit of the services coming back from the city. So there are some people out there that are, that are left out of these master plans. And, you know, for a little, ahead a little bit on revenue, we're taking a little more than we need one year over the next. Maybe we could include some of those areas that, that city lighting, that they, like, I live in a dark cul-de-sac, and I run my lights all night long because we've had some robbery issues in our area. And I try to talk to my neighbors and tell them, hey, you guys should do the same. Some do, some don't. But anyway, and I've talked to the, to the Leighton City Utility Department about some of that, and they thanked me for my contribution and my interest, you know, but, but at the end of the day, I still don't have city lights or secondary water. So anyway, again, I appreciate all the effort you went into your presentation and, and one question I had was, you say it's 10%. Was it 10% each year for three years, or was it 10% over three years? So do we have, have we had a 30% increase since 2017?
No, the, it was more than that. The master plan proposed 35% the first year, 20% the second year, and then 10% the third year. So there's already been 35 and 20, and then this would be 10. And we discussed in a meeting two weeks ago that if you add in the compounding of that, it is a 78% increase in water rates.
That's quite an increase. And, and we're just not taking enough revenue to, to, to pay for it? That we've got a, I mean, people coming in, just, we need a higher rate to offset the cost?
Well, the, the rates are in essence to build reserves and funds to accomplish the 40-plus million dollars worth of projects. And so you have to set those rates up. We set them up more front-loaded, right, on that plan. We tried various scenarios to spread them out over multiple years, to include debt, all, all different kinds of scenarios of how to do that.
Sure.
And this just, this ended up being the most, the easiest, not easiest, I shouldn't say that, the one that worked the best, right? And provided the best rates.
Well, like I say, I appreciate your presentation because my opinion coming in was tempered by what you had to say, and I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else want to comment? Okay, just a minute. Neither one of you guys wiped that down. Would you mind doing that for me? Tracy, do you want to jump up and then?
Come over here.
I, I just want to be safe here, so please, please just understand and appreciate where we're coming from.
I live at 924 South 75 West in Leighton. And I agree that I really liked watching the presentation. That was really nice to see all of the history behind it and the preparation and everything. The concern, obviously, in the creation of the plan was that we didn't know that there's going to be a global pandemic. Unfortunately, with Leighton City's water, there's, and in the beginning of last year with the, when COVID happened, my understanding is there was provisions for people that couldn't make their water payments. But that was only for a few months, and now people's water are being shut off, and it costs $50 for them to get it turned on. And my concern is for, a lot of people are still struggling with the ability to, that they still have to not go to work, and if they have to stay home with their kids for schooling or for quarantine. Although we are beginning vaccinations, we still are not at the point where people still don't risk losing pay. And then because of the increases, they may not be able to pay their water, and they could be shut off. And then Leighton City is charging $50 each month for them to turn it on. And so the concern is just that maybe the possibility of a provision because of the global pandemic, that it could be pushed, like the senator said, you know, that we may have to go, we'd have to go into debt if it was pushed. But the citizens in Leighton are definitely going into debt to be able to pay their utilities. And I know that it's not apples to apples, but Rocky Mountain Power does, because I know that they're a private industry, but they, they do make provisions. You can go on a payment plan to pay your power bill. However, Leighton City has nothing set up for that and hasn't for a while. And so that would just be maybe something to take into account with delaying it is the ability for people during this pandemic to be able to have the dignity to not have their water shut off and to also have the ability to have the water that we're all talking about and no one denies that we don't all need. So if that could be something to take into account, I know a lot of people in my neighborhood, when I brought up that I was coming here, voiced the concern of, they were, didn't understand the history of all that's going on. They're just in a global pandemic with their children, trying to pay their bills. And so if that could be taken into account, especially since we are a wealthier community, that, that, taking into account all those that can't afford what the plan, how it was presented in 2017, now maybe needs to be reevaluated. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I speak to that?
Yes. Heidi, do you mind, do you want to wipe that down for me? Thank you. I know this is, you know, retraining, it's something we're not used to, but yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to this kind lady's concern before it got forgotten. It's a very good question. Obviously, there's been a miscommunication because the city does have a payment plan. What, what we suspended for a period of time was any actual shut-offs regardless of whether people were paying their bills. But the city, in its entire history, has had a plan of somebody gets the bill and isn't able to pay it. If you'll contact our, our billing people and, and Tracy Probert's department and make them aware you're having a difficulty not able to pay the bill, we work with people all the time to get onto payment plans. The only exception would be that if, that if I have a long history of not paying my bills after I say that I'm going to pay them, then at some point, you know, that, that goodwill is, is used up, if you will. But the only thing that's been put back in is the fact that if you don't pay your bill at all, then you're going to be shut off. But we, we're very anxious because of the very reasons you talked about and just out of a sense of fairness. If, because we recognize we're all, today we're good, tomorrow we could not be good, even pandemic or no pandemic, there's things that happen, have other expenses. So that's an important thing to get out there is that we do want to work with people, and we do all the time work with people. If they'll call us ahead of time and say, I can't pay my bill, we'll say, what can you pay? We'll set up payment plans. But if you don't, if you don't let us know, we don't know otherwise, and, and the bill's not paid, then, then the remedy is shut off. But that's a great question. I'm glad you asked us, we could clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm going to put this in my hand so I remember before I leave.
That's okay.
Good evening. My name is Scott Williams. I live at 1501 North, 125 East here in Leighton. I want to thank you for your time tonight. I just have a couple of questions, I guess I'd like to start with because I'm not clear. Was the 10% increase included in the 2021 budget? Do you know, Mayor?
So initially, yes, we had that in there.
So the budget that's online is reflective of that, correct?
Well, the one that's online now.
No, the council voted to remove that from the 2021 budget back in June.
Okay, so that budget that I see online is not accurate?
Well, it, it doesn't include the 10% increase because the council's weighing in on whether they should adopt that into the budget or not.
So that was taken up in July? Because I'm not totally sure about that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Also, there's two plans that have been referred to tonight. There's the Master Water Plan and the Water Rate Analysis and Master Plan Project Review. I was just curious, Mayor, Council, are either of those plans on the internet where I can see them?
The only thing we have, I think Steve will answer that, is obviously the plan that was presented in the last, last council meeting that was online. But Steve, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, those, those plans are not posted on the internet because they contain a lot of security-sensitive information like our, our location of our wells and things, but we do have access to them. If you would like those, we can work with our legal group to make sure you can, you can see those and review those.
I just, yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not after any secrets, but I'd like to know a little bit more about the plan. I mean, my education here was on this, and this is very interesting and very good, but I did not, I mean, it doesn't give me a chance to really just take some notes and not really have the depth of information. I mean, there's a lot of words that are used in there, like reserves and things like that, which there's no definition for. I was just wanting to see what that, what was meant by that. Back in December, reference to the Water Rate Analysis Plan, and I don't have my notes again with me tonight, but I'm almost, I'm fairly certain that I heard that the projected revenues was exceeding what was in that, what the original analysis thought to the tune of about $800,000. Did I remember that correctly?
Correct.
So we're, the city is well ahead of its revenues, as we speak at the current rate of projected revenues, I should say.
All right. We determined as a staff that, that that amount was a reasonable amount, given it's, that a projection is all, you know, a model's a model, there's lots of estimates, and that we determined that that was a reasonable percentage or dollar amount to be ahead, yes.
So we're ahead. Is the projection that that will continue?
We have no idea, right? We went from the wettest water year we've had in a long time to the driest water year we've had in a long time, so. And revenues fluctuate based on that. We noticed tonight a 600 million gallon difference. Now, Councilman Fitzpatrick has pointed out that some of that's due to growth, but I would dare say that a, a minimal amount of that is due to new growth. Most of that is due to outdoor watering.
Now, I guess I, I am still, again, I, I'm not sure on a lot of this, but in the city budget that was, is on the internet, there's really no mention of shortfalls, of needs. So I, I'm sort of behind the curve, I guess, and all of a sudden, why this is happening to happen. Again, I don't have access to this analysis. I think it'd be interesting for the, in some form, for the taxpayers of this city to be able to access this information because it affects them, affects their pocketbook. And I think that we maybe have the, I don't know if we have a right, but I think we have, it would be wise and prudent for the city taxpayers to be able to access this information except on the fly in a meeting like this. You know, analytics are great. I understand analytics, but there's also a human side to this, has been pointed out. There's a lot of stress on the economy right now. There's all sorts of, I see a lot of issues. I don't want to get into them tonight because I'm just not prepared because I don't have the information. I will point out that, you know, I note that our rates for our water are going up well in, or much faster than the rate of inflation in this country, almost double, maybe triple based upon what I've heard tonight, which I don't quite understand why that is the case. I mean, you, you were saying in the last 10 years, this rate's gone up 32% at the city level, but yet inflation in the last 10 years, I think, has been between around 17, 18% maybe. So we're well ahead of the rate of inflation. So, and, and, and the growth is an issue. I mean, I think it almost, and I'm not trying to be too funny here, but I think, you know, the growth is costing us a lot of money, and it might be cheaper to have developers put rock in instead of grass in their new developments because it sounds like that's, the growth is driving the cost, or will drive the cost of water up in this city tremendously in the next few years. So I, again, I think the, the information's great. I, I'm not a big fan of the rate increase. In fact, I strongly would oppose it. I think more information should be made available to the city, to the taxpayers of the city, and I'll let them maybe weigh in. I was anticipating more people here tonight. I'm assuming that didn't happen because of the pandemic and people not willing to maybe risk it. But I, I, I am not a big fan of what is going on. I think more time and more information needs to be provided. I note that two years ago, when there was an issue about raising taxes, there was a whole bunch of information provided by the city. This is not only the case on this. And yes, it's only $2 a month, but it adds up. And there's people like, that are starting out, there are people on fixed incomes, $2 makes a lot of difference. makes a lot of difference in what they can buy and what they can't buy. They're working second jobs and other things to get by. You know, yeah, there's a very well-to-do part of the city, but there's also a part of the city maybe that could deserves a little bit of a break, if you ask me. So thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I am remembering.
Didn't have to ask.
Yes. No problem.
Hey, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, you're welcome to come up. I do want to also let you know that, you know, this is a public hearing and realistically we typically don't clap when people speak. So I don't want to get have this change the dynamics of the meeting and have it become more of a show. So if you could, just just kind of understand and respect the people that are talking and knowing that your council and myself are tentatively listening and want to want to hear everything. As you've also noticed, I haven't limited the time, which typically in any other city you probably would get a time limit, but we want to make sure you're being heard. So with that, if you could state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Weston McCloy, 946 South 50 East. And I just wanted to thank all of you for letting the residents have a say. I know you have your experts and, you know, the Finance Director and Engineering Department saying their piece, which is great, but obviously, as you can understand, it's their perspective. And so I appreciate you hearing some from from the citizens. I'm a CPA, so anytime I hear anything about rate increases or, you know, that catches my interest. So I dove, as soon as I heard, I went straight to the financial statements published for the city that, so that's, I mean, that's all the information as the gentleman before, that's pretty much all the information we've had to go on. And so I looking through their expenses for water in 2019 and 2020 for the water fund. So I mean, as you're probably well aware, you've you've read the financial statements or at least looked at them, it has the citywide, and then it breaks it down by fund. And as mentioned, the fund is meant to be self-sustaining. They're a sort of a, not a for-profit, but self-sustaining entity. Expenses for water for 2019 and 2020 remain virtually the same, while charges for water increased significantly, as we've stated with that rate increase. So charges for services for 2020 for water were $11.46 million, while expenses were $6.6 million. And of that, there was depreciation expense of $1.4 million. So depreciation expense for non-accounting people, it's basically, it's the systematic allocation of cost across a period. So you buy a you buy a truck, and instead of expensing the truck all at once, saying, hey, that was a $30,000 expense, you expense it over the life of the truck, say, seven years. So there was only cash cash expense of around $4, $4.2 million for the water fund, meaning that there was a cash net income of $6.2 million this last year. Not only that, but cash increased $3.3 million for the water fund, and that and as of June 30, again, that's all the information I had to go off, as of June 30, cash for the water fund was $8 million with liabilities, with the total liabilities less than $1 million. So as of 6/30, there was more than $7 million of cash the water fund could use to fund some of these projects. I understand the projects need to happen, right? We're talking about growth. We live in a city of growth. We have one of the best cities, probably the best city in the county, probably the state. And so I understand that there needs to be growth, and there needs to be a 10% increase sooner, okay, sooner rather than later. But is 2020 the right time? Is 2020, we've, you know, as a compounded increase of, I think it was, I heard on the way, over 78% or something over the last two years, or that would be with the 10% increase. So that's that's a very, a lot of increase. And to do this on the heels or in the throes of pandemic seems to be a little bit of ill timing. So my overall suggestion is we table this topic for a year or two, and we can come back and visit it because I agree, water is a precious resource, and this needs to be addressed. I just don't know if now is the right time. A few other points that I wanted to bring up as well is the net income percentage, so just going back to some of the numbers. So that's basically the net income of the fund, so revenues minus your expenses divided by the revenue. So how much of their revenues are actually getting to a sort of a net income? It averaged from, sorry, let me get my notes here. Yes, so it was 42% in 2020. So for every, and that's that's accounting, so that's without the cash. If we're talking cash, it's more along 50 to 55% range. So for every dollar that the that the water fund charges, 55 cents or 42 cents, depending if you take depreciation expense out or not, goes straight to the net income. So I, again, understand there's need for growth here and that part of this is to build up reserves to to make these capital projects happen. I just feel, based off of the numbers alone, that there can at least be these next few years financed growth perfectly fine with even just the cash reserves, let alone all the net income that's coming in for the water fund. A few other things that have been mentioned, there's been some graphs shown of, oh, you know, we have one of the lowest base rates based on $10,000 or 10,000 gallons, which is true. But when we start increasing the water usage, and this is especially true, and again, there's a tiered system, but it's especially true for those who have, you know, who don't have secondary water, once you get up into the 20, 25,000 gallon range, Leighton starts becoming expensive, much more expensive than counterparts. So although that was on a 10, on a 10 gallon, 10,000 gallon perspective, again, that was what, you know, the Finance Director wanted you to see, okay? That was his perspective. This is the, this is my perspective, and that's just what I'd like you to see as well. And finally, gross margin, so that's just revenues minus expenses divided by revenues. Anyway, it was 10% from 2011 to 2018, probably a little low, right? I mean, that was before you adopted adopted the the change. I understand that's a little low. While it averaged 31% in the last two years, and in 2020, it was 42%. So again, very high. I just did some quick other calculations. Again, Apple is in a completely different industry, but you know, they're a very profitable company. They have a 21% net income margin, okay? So this water fund is trying, is taking twice as much net income as Apple is based off of, you know, in income to to net income, revenue to net income. So again, overall, I understand this needs to happen. I thank you for your time. I just don't think 2020 is the time to do it. I think that there is is you have, you know, we can push this off a year or two, wait till people recover, people are able to absorb these costs a little bit more. Talked about, oh, it's only increase of $2 a month. Well, that $2 is just the base rate, you know, depending on, it's 10, it's 10% of your overall bill. So it definitely can add up. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment?
Rachel Miller, 260 West, 1925 North. I am part of that group of people that does not have money. I am pregnant, I have a 15-month-old, and my husband is in college, and we're homeowners. Like, money means a lot. I don't want to get a second job to pay a water bill. That's 10%. The gentleman, the senator, whoever the heck he was, he was like, oh, it's just $2 a month. To him, who has multiple businesses, it is just $2 a month. To me, $2 plus the $4 to pay for city lighting, and if I increase my water for the summer because I want my child to play in my backyard, that's $10. That's a box of pouches that my child cannot eat that month. Obviously, I'm not going to let him starve. Obviously, we're going to take, but like, I know how to budget. Dave Ramsey is my friend sometimes, but like, like, it's just frustrating that, like, people just like, oh, disregard it. It's just $2 here, it's $4 here, it's $5 here, that you were, we're killing us by 1,000 cuts. That's my point, like, put it off. Obviously, that gentleman is very good with numbers. I, I don't care if we're the most expensive in the state or in the country. I don't care. I don't want to pay more. I don't have the money. Three years ago, I would have lost my mind. I did not live here three years ago. And if and if rates continue to increase, I mean, Utah's already borderline unlivable. I can't move anywhere else. Like, my husband's job is not anywhere else. COVID does not allow me, and so I have to be able to live here. I just, I don't want, like, sorry, like, sorry, junior, like, I can't buy this for you this month, like, and I'm going to the extreme, and I know that because it is $2, and we can make ends meet, but it's just the principle of the matter. It's $2 this year, then it's $4 next year, and then it's $10 the next year, and pretty soon, my my utility bill has increased by $100 a month. And as you all know, I'm assuming you're all parents, grandparents, like, college doesn't pay for itself, my child is going to need a car one day, like, all of these things add up that you're disregarding, and you're just like, oh, it's just 10% or it's 35%. It's just, it all adds up. Or you guys wouldn't need the increase, need the increase because that gentleman obviously says there's a revenue. I'm not here to argue numbers. That presentation was beautiful. If we all got quizzed on it, we would all fail. So like, I'm just saying, like, it adds up. And obviously, that gentleman pointed out, it can be postponed. That is it. Also, quick question. I got the cops called on me the other day because it turns out Leighton City does not have dog-friendly parks. I have to have it on a leash. Is there, like, what is the protocol to get, like, a leash-less park? I'm just curious.
You mean an off-leash?
Yes. So I was throwing the ball for my dog.
Currently, we do not have a park available. However, we are trying to work with a partnership to have our first off-leash dog park.
Awesome. Where? Do you know? Can you say?
No, I can say, the only thing is, obviously, it comes down to funding.
Why? And I'm just curious, why is that funding?
Well, because it takes money to to build the park, to put the.
Oh, like a dog park, you mean? Not just like?
Yeah.
A park that already exists?
Off-leash dog park. And if this goes through, we, our first one could be over just off the parkway at, with a partnership with the Intermountain Healthcare.
That'd be awesome. I support that.
So.
Unless it costs me money, then I don't like my dog that much. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on, then. Good catch. That's like going to the car and forgetting your mask.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
I only have one question. It's educational about the water. Question, what is the average normal water payment bill monthly? Anybody that knows, please answer. Thank you.
Well, lots going to depend on the size of your family, but my family pays $75.50 a month. That includes water, sewer, trash, stormwater, and lighting fee.
I support that. That is very good. I just wanted to see if somebody was, had different figures, calculations and all that because I'm into the counting and paying the bills. So that is great, and I have no other entries in it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay, I'm going to make one quick reference to see if Mr. Crane has received any online comments since our last posting.
There are only eight comments online, and some of the people are here tonight. So they're all, for example, I can't remember who the accountant was, but your comments are online.
Question?
They'll be given to the council. So they're, one of the eight just simply wanted to change their Internet address for billing purposes, but I'm sure that wasn't part of the hearing. There are some others, and I'm just going to kind of give you a general because we'll give these to you so you can look at them. The first, first one is a question of whether or not they're allowed to, under state law, collect rainwater and and use that on their yards, and the answer is yes. State of Utah doesn't prohibit that. And then this is a good question that might be answered tonight, and that is, is this going to be the last increase for a while, or when will the next increase occur? Are there going to be others, in other words, to follow? And that was one of the questions. And then I probably five out of the eight are just asking about timing because it appears that most of the, most people understand that you've got to increase the payments for water. Most of the statements say that we need to increase it, but most of them were just asking questions regarding why now, essentially. And let's see. I think, a question about conservation, whether this was solely for the purpose of encouraging conservation or whether there was really an underlying basis for the for the racing rate increase. In other words, is this just a conservation measure or? And then another question on whether or not the city has put into play any conservation issues or whether we are using an inordinate amount of of water. And I think Mr. Price was here, but that's, that was a question for the city. And I think that's, that pretty much sums up what what we've got. Nobody was saying, yes, we want this increase. They were all saying, no, we don't want this increase. But many of them were tempered also with, we understand the increase needs to occur. We just think, you know, the timing on it is not right. And that's, that's what you've got. So you've got eight comments, and I can get those to you.
Okay.
They're pretty short, all of them.
Thank you, Gary, for monitoring that for us. And like I said, we want to make sure we kind of have the opportunity to hear from all those who would like to express their views. Okay, Council, that brings us then to some action that would probably need to take place. Our, so basically, our public hearing, we just went through our public hearing, so now we're at a point where we can close our public hearing and then look at amending the water rate. So I'll look for action regarding the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we close this public hearing regarding the water rate.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Call in favor?
I.
Thank you. Okay, so the public, public hearing regarding the water rate increase is now closed. So being the fact that we had a consent item, which was item number C, we did not act on, we chose to wait until after we closed our public hearing, we will now go back and take deal with our amending the water rate and other fees. So with that, Mr. Probert, do you want to step up to the podium and and address those issues for us?
Sure. So in Mayor members of council, we have ordinance 21-03. Obviously, the main component of that is the 10% increase in water rates. In addition to that, and would propose to be part of an action on this ordinance, would be to increase a few other minor fees, one for color photocopies, as detailed in the the information, a change in the cost for passport shipping fee, the expedited fee on that. Also fees, very small fees related to fire incident reports. And since our last meeting, there was an addition, which is the fee that is charged to developers for the cost of streetlights that are installed. And so those, those have been added in there. So that's not the street lighting fee that residents pay, it's the fees that the developers pay to buy our lights to install them. I don't, I would assume it's just up to you to make, to take a motion on that. I don't have anything else to say.
Hey, I just want to make sure, Council, are you clear then on this? I mean, do you have any questions regarding? Hang on, Trace.
So we're not going to adopt the consolidated fee schedule before we adopt the water, are we?
I think what he's saying is you can make a motion to accept it as it is, or if you have any amendments to the consolidated fee schedule.
So how do we make the amendments unless we pass the water bill?
Just in your motion.
It could be part of the motion.
Yeah.
You could pass all or part.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, then, help me through this.
So, as Councilmember Bloxum, and maybe it should be Mr. Crane that helps with this, not me, but you could make a motion to pass the ordinance as presented, with the water rate fees included, or you can make a motion to pass the ordinance with amendments, which would be either to exclude the water rates as presented, or, I mean, I don't see any reason why you would exclude any of the other fees. So, that's probably your two options, would be to either adopt it as is, or adopt it with the water rates excluded. That way, our, the only reason I'm putting it that way is that way, these other rates that are in here are adopted with this ordinance, if it was that you're choosing not to adopt the water rates. I don't know if that made any sense or not.
And, Gary, you can correct me, but if you wanted to, 5%, and you just say, your motion is to accept the consolidated fee schedule as is, with an amendment to the water rates at 5%, not 10%, right, Gary? Or whatever you want, just whatever you want.
So, I don't know that I want to restate that, but certainly-
I know, I'm just trying to think how to do this. Are we, are we gonna vote on the water rates, then, too, or not? It's a mute point if we change it in the consolidated, whether we accept it or not, right?
Yeah, it is, that's the way you change it.
Okay, okay. So, I just wanna-
I don't want to confuse matters, but we could throw out a third option.
Well, let me-
Which the third option would be, if you still want to consider all of the information and not take action specifically on your water rate, you could actually adopt the consolidated fees minus the water rate increase, and postpone that decision until your next meeting, if you're still not real clear. So, basically, you have three options.
What could you choose for your back-end amendment? If you did that?
Okay, well, I like that option, so-
Or you could continue the entire-
Same.
... fee schedule until the next meeting, and then you have an opportunity to discuss the council.
Good point, yeah, so we have four options.
Mayor?
Five.
Can we make some comments before we decide to do this?
Yeah, Mayor, I-
Sure, let's do that, yeah. I'm open for discussion.
Yeah, I think we ought to discuss this. We just went through a public hearing, and I think we owe it to the public to discuss this, and not just go to the, go to the meeting, go to the, go to the vote. So, that'd be my, my thought right now, so, take it, take it.
Okay, so I'm gonna just make a couple of comments. I've had two weeks to think about this since the last meeting, and I, let me tell you, this has been kind of back when we had to do our very first budget. I had a lot of sleepless nights, and I've had some not, not comfortable thoughts with this, and have filled it a lot of phone calls from people. And I'm not gonna say that public clamor is gonna be what's gonna drive this, but it has made me think about a couple of things. One, if the previous council would have adopted the full 65% back when it was proposed, rather than breaking it up over a three-year period of time, the water rate would have been $21.20, which is only 40 cents more than what we're currently at. I don't understand why they just didn't do it. I know it was probably a political issue, but I have a hard time with the compounding, because it is, if we pass this 10%, it is not 65% like I thought it was three years ago, it's 78.1%. That being said, the 2080 that we're currently at is about 62% of the initial 65% that was requested. Also, I don't think this addresses conservation well enough. I don't think we've put conservation measures in place that could possibly reduce water usage throughout the city. We have secondary systems that are metered but not monitored. We have a landscape ordinance that I asked several months ago to be addressed, so that we can look at changing how we use our water. I don't think we should rely solely on Weber Basin for the education of how to landscape in this climate, they're a great resource. I question whether or not the secondary expansion out west is gonna be paid for appropriately, and by a water source that is not what I consider a good water source for out there. And I don't think we've looked at other types of conservation measures. I come from Colorado, from, in the '70s, when you watered every other day. You didn't water between certain hours, nobody watered on Sunday. We haven't looked at those kinds of options within the city to try to reduce our water consumption. If we can reduce our water consumption, we can save water, we will have excess water. So, my feeling on it is, at this point, is we've given you 62%, let's wait it out a year, this is a pandemic. I have talked to many people that have been suffering. I also know that I think there's been some pent-up in the businesses where they limp themselves along, and now they're starting layoffs. We've had families that have been directly impacted in the last month by layoffs, is because their companies could not keep up any longer. And I think, even though the city's doing good, I think we've got a lot of citizens that are hurting. If we have excess revenue, as the one gentleman Weston had mentioned, we've given you 62 of this 65%, let's back up and do conservation, and readdress this issue in the next year. That would be my motion at this point.
But we're not in a motion situation, we're just in discussion.
Yeah, that would be how I feel on it.
Okay.
May I as well, ma'am? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start out by thanking everyone for their comments. We received emails, we received phone calls, and you were here tonight, so thank you for being here, thank you for representing others who aren't here, and hopefully, we have those online that took the opportunity to listen. This council has been dedicated to, at least, to transparency. Transparency doesn't mean that we agree, but it means that we're doing the people's business, your business and our business, in public. And so, we have at least three of us here on the council that are very active in making sure you have information, whether you follow that information or not, or whether you follow us or not. Councilman Bloxum and Councilwoman Fitzpatrick and myself are active in trying to push out information, to let you know what's happening. We get the agendas, we talk about the meeting after, and hopefully, that is, that's helpful, and that's something that we promised to do. If you heard my comments from last meeting, we decided to keep this open for these two weeks, to have, to allow for these comments, and to have these discussions further, and that was part of this transparency. With that said, here we are, we live in a desert, and as was stated tonight, we're gonna run out of culinary water as we grow. It's not magic, we're gonna be able to create water. And so, the plan that was presented tonight, and the plan that was presented that the council put together before, and I applaud them for their diligence and looking into the future, addresses that. If we can, if we can have secondary water access as we grow out west, that's going to reduce the amount of culinary water that's needed. And so, as you look at the increases that have happened, it was mentioned tonight, that most of that's for infrastructure as well, to be able to build that up, to make the plan work. So, we're in a tough spot, however, with our, with our water system. We have the new growth out west, and we have an old system as well. And so, you've got, you've got maintenance, you've got deferred maintenance. And so, my hope is, and I'm confident, I guess, in this from the presentations we've heard, by the way, this is the seventh time we've heard this presentation, is that all of those issues, or all of those components are in this model. The reserves, the maintenance, the deferred maintenance, the operations, the, talking about the infrastructure for secondary, that it's in there, along with the operational expenses for the water system. I say that because we, you saw the model, they went over the presentation. Last year, we, and it was brought up earlier tonight, last year, we went over the revenue projection for water this past year, at the tune of about $800,000. And that's above the model. And we have projections that we've been shown in a prior meeting, that next year, if we didn't do anything, that we'd be behind $700,000 in, with the revenue model. And so, I look at those numbers, and it tells me that, well, we're, we can pay for that money, or with those projects next year, with the money that was banked, banked this year, regardless of whether it was in a wet year or a dry year, I understand that model as well. But I believe that we're in a spot right now where we can postpone this action, until we can look at it again with one more year of data, to see if the model is still predicting what it should. So, that'd be my, where my thoughts are this evening, is, at the same time, and this is, this is, it's just ironic how this works, is the reason that we were, you talk about conservation, but the reason that the numbers were so high for this last year was because we used more water. We didn't conserve, and so, here we are with this excess of revenue, and that has got to be addressed. And so, I think, as part of the, of our deliberations, of our duty to the citizens of Leyton, is to figure out, yes, we've got to have this system, and it has to, and it has to work. And yes, we're gonna have to increase the cost of the, of the water, and it's, it's not gonna go away. It's not gonna go away. We've gotta, we've gotta work on this problem in the meantime, and figure out a way, and whether that is, obviously, we've got a professional staff who does a great job of what they do, and I applaud them once again, I applaud the councils and the city manager before, for looking at this plan, and looking into the future, like those that came before us with the wells here in the city, of looking into the future, and we're still benefiting from those wells that were dug decades ago. We've got to have that sort of a long, long view goal, or vision, which I believe this plan has. Frankly, right now, I think we're fine for this, for this next year, and we look at it again, so that's where I would be tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
I'm gonna take the opposite, and just get that out front. The one thing I haven't heard tonight, I've heard all the stuff, what's gonna cost, what we gotta do, but I haven't heard anybody talk about conservation. I mean, two years ago, my wife complained about the water bill. I had no clue, I don't pay bills. And she says, what's going on? So, I thought, well, quit using so much. She goes, I don't use anymore than I did the year before, it went up. Well, then I find out, okay, what's going on? So, we decided, if we don't like what we're paying, then we have to change something. I can't change what council had done, so we went out and did some things. So, for the next two years, the last two years, we've paid less than we paid the year before the second increase. And I hear people talking about $2. $2 a month, I understand, and I also understand that $2 equates maybe into more, if you don't, if you use more than your $10,000. But we got to realize, we're in an area, water, you can't make water. It's either there, it ain't there. And if you use too much, I don't care if it's secondary, I don't care if it's culinary, you're using up water. We use secondary water to create culinary water, and if it's not there, then we don't have any. And so, people have to learn to cut back, change the way they water, do things. I remember, don't ask me where I got it, when they said to put a brick in your toilet, a brick, 48 inches, square inches.
In the tank.
In the tank, yeah, not in-
Okay.
And do it careful, because it's porcelain, don't just drop it in. But I was trying to figure it out, and some of you are a lot brighter than I am, but I figured out, on a normal commode, I figured seven flushes a day, which may not, I'm just going by me and my wife, you'd save about 560 gallons a year, just from that. And you don't have to do anything. And I know there's all kinds of reasons why maybe you don't want to, or whatever, but there's some fairly simple solutions for $2. Now, if you use more than that, I think you should pay more. I think you should have your hands slapped, and paddled, and say, hey, you know, we're trying to conserve water, and you're out there blowing it out like it's nothing, you know? And I'd be all for having something that we could do that. But what I'm trying to say right now, 10% today is 20% tomorrow. Next year, yeah, we can look at it, but it's gonna cost more. If we'd have done it last year, it would, it could have been a little less, could have been. But then, you look at everything, everything's going up. You try to buy pipe, pipe, you know, things that used to be this are now this, and so, you know, I'm putting it off, I hate putting off anything, and I'm sorry if there's people that are struggling, I'm on a fixed income, and I had to make changes, okay? And I made them, and they weren't really great, but we did a few things. And I don't water as much as I used to, and my lawn's, it's still green, sometimes it, you know, looks like you could use some more, but that's fine, you know? And so, you have to look at the problem. You know, if our forefathers didn't say, put a dam across the Colorado River, or Pine View, or Echo, or wherever, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a Leyton, okay? Because if you ain't got water, you ain't got anything. And, and so, to me, I realize, hey, there's never a good time to raise taxes, ever, never a good time. But if you don't, who's to say 10% is gonna cut it next year? I don't know. I'll guarantee you one thing, in the next 15 or 20 years, you're gonna see water rates go way high, whether, well, you say 10% or not, we're gonna be raising them again. May not be we, but someone will, because they've been raised over and over for the last 50 years. So, anyway, that's my opinion, I'm not, I don't feel good about putting it off, because I just know it's gonna cost us more money.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kelly, to comment?
Yeah, thanks for all your comments, the public, the staff, the fellow council members. This is an issue that we've, we've gone over, and that we've seriously taken everybody's opinions on, whether they're official public comments, or whether there are people calling us on the phone, just so we can understand the system. And we, as Councilmember Morris mentioned, I think we owe a gratitude to the watermaster plan for laying out a roadmap for us to be able to follow, because water is a finite resource, it's not something that we can create, like you mentioned, Councilmember Thomas. We're not gonna solve this water issue tonight, we're not going to stop talking about the water issue tonight, and so, sometimes it can get a very binary, like, if you don't do it now, you're never gonna do it. We're not gonna stop talking about water every budget, we're gonna talk about water, we're gonna review it, and we're gonna make sure that we're, we're charging the reasonable rates. But, and so, a yes vote, Dave, doesn't mean that you don't care about the people, it doesn't mean that-
Oh, no.
That you don't, that you don't feel like you're not in the middle of a pandemic. But a no vote doesn't mean that we don't care about water, or that we don't think that it's an important resource, or that we don't think that it's, that we're gonna put a moratorium on rate increases for the next decade. That's, that's not what a no vote tonight is. What a no vote tonight, and what I intend to vote against the rate increases, for timing issues, as I mentioned. I think, I want another year of data, I want another year without a rate increase in the middle, in the midst of a pandemic, we have reserves to pay for it, the system's not going to suffer over this next year, and we look at the rate increase the next time we meet as a budget, and we decide where we do it then, and we do it every year, from then on out, because that's our job. We were elected to look at the property tax rate every year, we were elected to look at the- We were elected to look at the streetlights every year. We were elected to look at the water rates every year and not pass the buck. And now, this isn't a passing the buck because I'm going to be here next year. And so, I don't think it's the best timing for us to make the decision right now, and my hope would be that we would, we would pass the consolidated fee schedule without the 10% increase, allow us to be able to gain another data point, and then we'll look at this every year moving forward. With that being said, this is an important issue, and I hope that the people who are commenting and who are involved in this can realize that this is not something that's going away, and that this isn't how things are going to be for the foreseeable future, that we all need to get together and understand the Water Master Plan and understand exactly what we're trying to accomplish, and making sure we can protect the infrastructure that we have as well as accessing new water that we need for growth. So, that's where I'm at on it, and I, it's an issue that I've thought a lot about, and I am grateful that we could have this dialogue with the community, with the staff, and with the council, to be able to come to what we think is the best, best situation for the, for the city.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a couple of comments, try to be brief. I appreciate everybody who's come out here or sent comments in. I appreciate the staff, all the work they've done on this, not only tonight, but I've been here for seven years through this whole thing, from when the study was brought forward and everything else. I think I understand the Water Master Plan pretty well. I think as far as the financial part of the master plan, I think we've implemented that pretty well up to this point. However, on the practical side of the master plan, I think we failed in some ways. One of the most integral parts of the Water Master Plan is the secondary water system, and we're three and a half years after passing a Water Master Plan, and most people probably don't understand the secondary system, but they're all private companies that provide that secondary water right now. The city has zero secondary connections right now. So, we're three and a half years in a 10-year master plan, and we don't even have an agreements with any of those secondary water systems on how that system's going to work. And I think that's where we're failing this Water Master Plan. So, until we can get those agreements in place and know how this system's going to work, and I think there's a lot of issues that have to be resolved there, as we've all discussed. We haven't even touched the, the tip of the iceberg on them. I do think they are overcomeable, though. But until those secondary agreements and the agreements with the companies and how that's all going to build out, I'm not in favor of supporting the 10% at this time, even though I was supporting it a few years ago. Because like I said, the financial part's rolled right ahead, but the implementation of the groundwork has not. And so, as a result, if there's no other comments from the council anymore, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the consolidated fee schedule as is without the 10% water rate increase.
Okay. Council, that was a motion. Is there a second?
Could you, I guess, a substitute motion to add a time limit to that, to when we look at, Councilman Day, when we look at that again? I just don't want to say no, because it has to be, we got to look at it again, and, and so, that'd be my, just a thought for you.
Okay. So, the comment I'll make toward that, Clint, is, I was just holding off for a minute. I, I would like, I'm only one council member out of five, but I think now's a good time to get the consensus on the council, to ask the staff with a time limit. I know Councilmember Fitzpatrick has asked for months on a landscaping ordinance, so I'd like for consensus from the council to direct the staff in next meeting that they could tell us how they could march forward with that, and to give us a timetable. I'd like also to have council consensus to direct the staff to do the same with the contracts with the secondary water system, so we can iron those problems out in the coming months and get those resolved. I'm not asking for that timeline tonight, but I'm asking for council consensus to have that brought to us for the next meeting.
Well, if you're going to add things to it.
No, that's not part of my, that's not part of my motion. That's not part of my motion. That's just to answer Clint's concern about my motion.
I was going to say, we got into this deliberation last time, and this time I want to make sure that we follow the best we can, although we're not held to Robert's Rules of Order. However, I think we do need to conduct ourselves appropriately. So, we had a motion
So, yeah, I made the motion, but I was answering Clint's question, and we can address that after.
Do you accept his substitution?
I think it's misunderstood. My, my, mine is on the water rate increase, the timeline of when we look at that again. What we've done in the past is, after each year, we've, after the summer season, we've looked at it to make sure that, to see where the model is and see where the revenue is. I just don't want to say no tonight to, yep, nope, 10% is off, it's, we need to look at it again, that sort of a timeline, if that makes sense.
Okay, so, let's go ahead and vote on the motion, and then I'll answer your question.
Just a clarification from, from Tracy. I mean, do we, do we, the consolidated fee schedule is something that just comes up budgetarily every year?
Right. So, it'll come up again when we adopt the budget, and this fall, we'll review the, you know, the progress from the summer water season. It's like Councilmember Bloxum suggested, this is going to be an annual thing. We do it every year. We've done it every year. And so, you know, there's no, no implication that we're going to just not talk about water ever again, right? We'll, we'll be talking about it in the budget, and we'll be talking about it this fall again after the summer season, so we can see where we're at, and that was, that was the intention.
Okay.
Okay. So, you withdraw your substitute?
Second.
Okay. So, we're back to Councilman Day's motion then.
And I seconded it.
And Councilman Bloxum seconded it. So, are you guys clear on what you're voting on? To accept the consolidated fee schedule minus the water rate increase. So, with that, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Bloxum.
Aye.
Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Oh.
Okay. There you have the vote, four to one, regarding the consolidated fee schedule and the water amendment. With that, I am not going to rehash anything that's been said by the council members regarding this water study, because I happen to agree with pretty much everything that's been said, including Councilman Day. I was there when we voted on it, and at that time, it made sense, and we agreed to analyze it every year, which is what this new governing body has done and why they've come to the conclusion that they had. However, I am going to address the issue of conservation. I recognize the fact, we have not done that in the past, and there will be a plan, and I want you to know that I've already actively been working on it and have found that there's going to be a national contest, and I'm going to enter Laton in that contest, so watch for the details. So, in April, we will have a conservation plan in action. There will actually be, be a very good incentive for us to do it. I know right now, I'm going to make the statement, it's going to skew if we all accept the pledge, but it will skew that data, so we need to know that. But as a city, we are coming together, we are acknowledging the fact that water is an issue, we do need to implement a conservation plan, and we will. So, with that, Council, I think we need to go, we have one more item of business to finish up.
No, no, no.
No, we don't. I want to say something that I got told not to, okay? Because it wasn't with the motion. With, about water, you play your game, that's fine. The city, we need, and maybe you're saying this, I don't know, but I want to say it directly, the city needs to say how they're going to save water.
That will be part of the plan.
Okay, the city, not, I don't care about the public. I mean, I do, but I mean, but the city needs to say, how are we going to implement what we do to save water, not what they do with the city, but, does that make sense?
Yes, and that's part of the plan. That's, that's what I'm hearing loudly.
If that's what you're saying, thank you.
Yes, yes. And we will put some meat behind it, is what I'm trying to say.
But I just want to make sure it's plain enough where I understand it.
Yes.
So, that's all I want to, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank you all as well. So, we did, we were actually down to item C as far as the actual budget, right? We need to still act on one more item here regarding our public hearing, which is to amend the Laton City budget. So, Tracy, again, thank you for being so patient.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, we have ordinance 21-04 to amend the adopted budget for the city, and this generally tends to be routine about mid-year. There's a number of revenue sources that come in that we weren't aware of, and, you know, when we first set the budget, and so, we need to amend the budget to put those in there and then appropriate the funds accordingly. There was also included in this series of amendments, the recognition of a revenue related to the 10% water increase, and obviously, my recommendation will change that you eliminate that from, from your motion. But just to go very briefly through these, most of these amendments deal with grant revenues that were received. The bulk of it, or a big piece of it, was CARES Act funding that was received to help with personal protective equipment and overtime hours and different types of things that city personnel had to do in order to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, and that was the parameters of the grant. And so, there's about $119,000 to help the city recoup extra money that we spent that we would not have spent had it not been for the pandemic. There's also different funding in here in community development and fire and CDBG related to CARES Act-type funding that needs to be appropriated in the budget. We also had some revenue from UDOT land transaction that occurred that needs to be recognized in the budget, and also an appropriation related to that same transaction. We had homebuyer assistance, early payoff grant revenue that was received that needs to be appropriated back as program income. We also had some funding that was related to the development of Harmony Park and the carryforward of funding from a prior year related to those projects as it came from development and from other sources. With that, staff would make the recommendation that the council adopt ordinance 21-04 with the elimination of any items referencing a budget increase in the water fund. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Thank you.
Any public comments? Council, we're now back to where we need to take action regarding item number C, as well as close our public hearings.
This one, I think I understand. Got a little confusing there for me a minute. First of all, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearings and that we vote to amend the Laton City budget for the fiscal year 2021, ordinance 21-04 eliminating the budget, any reference to the budget to the water rate increase monies.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All, well, excuse me, this will be a roll call vote. So, with that, I'll start out with Councilman Day.
Yes.
Councilman Bloxum.
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was unanimous. Okay, that brings us down to any unfinished business before this body.
Yeah.
Oh, but there's more.
I'd like to go back to what I mentioned before my motion.
Okay.
First off, I'd like to review, as Councilmember Fitzpatrick has mentioned numerous times before, the landscape ordinance, and have him bring back a next time, a timeline when that could happen, and then also the secondary water companies and those issues there. I'm just looking for consensus from the council, since it's something I just can't, one person request.
Is that my support?
Okay, I have two head nods, three head nods, four head nods, five head nods.
We don't have to say yay.
No, no, it's not. In this case, we don't have to do that, okay? So, we'll look at the landscape ordinance and the secondary water.
Thing of unfinished business is a question for Gary. I was asked by a resident, you can probably guess who, what the status of the GERTS ordinance problems are up there, if any.
That's a good one.
What'd he say?
It shouldn't be a place to talk about that. That's illegal. Let me, let me chat with your editor.
That'd be fine. Okay, that'd be fine.
Okay. All right. Good advice, Mr. Attorney. Okay. You said you had one?
I just want to make one last comment, and that's to those watching online. Again, thank you for your participation, if you sent things in, and I want to thank the audience that's present here for the manner in which you presented yourself. We were a little worried, to be honest, about what tonight might bring, and so, thank you. We really appreciate all of your comments and your preparation for presenting to us tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. That was very well stated. Council, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and everyone, good night.